Um, otherwise, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Um, one change I would make is, and I want to take off that setting of the public hearing.
Okay, so we'll have the, uh, consent will include, uh, J. one through six, and that'll be a separate, separate action item, I assume?
Yeah, it would have to be separate, maybe.
Okay, that, that sounds good. Anything else to change on the agenda before I get a motion to appro-? I'm gonna, I wanna state that it please, uh, commissioners, if we could speak into our microphones. Sometimes when we go back, uh, look at the minutes, we, we don't get some of the action items and stuff, so. I'm, you're smiling. But I'm not singling anyone out. But if we could speak in the microphones, it, uh, it would be much appreciated. Um, motion to approve the agenda with those changes.
Second.
There.
How about if we speak in our mics but don't have them on?
I, I figured I would have comments if I, and I didn't single you out, but you're still. Uh, motion and second to approve the agenda, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Uh, opportunity for public comments, anyone here from the public wish to speak to the commission today? I am not seeing anybody, no one's running up to the front of the room, so, uh, let's go to, uh, uh, we have auditors on here, would you like to just handle the auditor stuff in E. one? That, we can skip over that, and, uh, let's go to the register of deeds, no one's here from the register of deeds office? Sheriff's office. And I believe, I should have corrected, you're gonna handle that H. R. correction as well? Okay, 'cause that's, so then we won't have a human resources report, but that's under human resources here.
Morning commissioners, uh, Sheriff Pat West, Mead County, um, just starting off with some of the statistics. Um, pretty straightforward, as far as numbers on the jail, calls for service are obviously up for the deputies.
Why do you think they're up so much? I mean, that's a huge jump.
Yeah, some of it's, uh, some of it is, um, just summertime. Some of it is we're documenting more civil calls, which were not being collected before. So, a lot of it is, uh, extra patrol, we're starting to let the deputies, or informing the deputies to document. We know we're, they're out there working, but I want them to document that they're out there working. So that's why some of these numbers are probably a little higher, just keeping track of what's going on.
Well, they're like, uh, like, I notice you're up fifty percent on dispatch calls.
Oh, yeah, that, that I don't know how that's happening, but.
And, 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 and I noticed, you know, the traffic stops were, were doubled, but the state's attorney statistics, are you not charging them? Or are they going straight to court?
Lot of, lot of it might be highway safety warnings, too.
'Cause these guys aren't, I, I mean, they're not just stopping them for, I mean.
No, the, this, the traffic stops can go anywhere from a warning.
Ken, please announce, Ken, please announce yourself.
Yeah, uh, Ken Clubber, Deputy State's Attorney. Uh, the, the stops can be anywhere from a warning on, on the speeding or, or vehicle violation.
I, I, I'm tracking traffic tickets.
Uh, class twos. We don't track.
Okay.
Um, they're not included in any of our statistics. Because they, they, we don't charge them out, they just go straight through the clerk's office, show up and pay at the window.
Okay. I, I, I was just making sure that they weren't stopping them for nothing. I, I don't mean.
We know better than that.
I, I, I didn't, I didn't mean for you guys nothing, I, just wanting to make sure they were still being charged out.
Yeah, I don't know if Pat's statistics have class twos versus class ones, I don't know if they break them out that way, but, uh, we charge what's appropriate when it comes through.
Yeah, also, uh.
I like the UIs.
Yeah. As, as.
Oh, and when you look at our statistics, what we're tracking is, is what we call the lead charge. So the traffic stop may be for a valid class one ticket, and then there's found to be a controlled substance in the vehicle. So we're tracking it as a controlled substance rather than a traffic.
Okay, I was just curious.
Um, as far as the deputies, as you or you guys are aware, we've been extremely busy. Um, a lot of pursuits going on, a lot of, uh, people wanting to fight with law enforcement. And it's not only us, it's across the state, um, but definitely getting, um, it's a different, different atmosphere, uh, for sure. But everybody's, uh, staying professional, working hard, doing what they can to, uh, um, keep us all safe out there, so. I appreciate them and what they're doing with that.
You know, it used to be strangers or non-natives, non-residents of South Dakota.
Native, native Mead counties?
Huh?
Natives of Mead County?
Na- yeah, na- well, natives of South Dakota.
Right.
Didn't use to challenge.
Sure.
So, are, are some of these incidences that you're having, are they people traveling through, or they are South Dakota residents that are just?
Yeah, majority of them are people that live here, it's just, uh, you know, we've had stolen vehicles, driving the influence of drugs and alcohol is a big deal, uh, you know, warrants. People have warrants, they're, they're, uh, not wanting to go to jail, so they take off. Um, that seems to be the common denominator of it.
Apparently they haven't been paying the show.
Right. Uh, just a little bit of, uh, minor, uh, bookkeeping, unless anybody's got any questions? I can move on to that. Uh, under the board docs, the last meeting, we discussed, um, jail and correction officers, or I, I'm sorry, it was, it was documented that dispatch was switched to an, uh, twelve-hour work shift, and that's not the case. Uh, dispatch remains a forty-hour week, and the jail correction officers and supervisors in the jail switched to an eighty-six-hour, fourteen-day cycle. So that's a minor change as far as documented, does that work?
Yep, that, that should work, shouldn't it, Ken? Uh, we, yeah, it was corrected in our minutes last, it was stated at the meeting before, and we corrected it in the minutes last time. Um, so the, the dispatch, just to be clear, the dispatch did not change the shift.
No, nope.
Uh, what was the supervisors and, uh, and what else changed, sorry?
Yeah, the jail correctional officers and the supervisors.
Okay.
Anything in the jail switched to.
The eighty-six, fourteen, correct?
Yep, twelve-hour, twelve-hour shift.
But, but our minutes said dispatch changed, and that's what has to be changed.
Correct, just amended.
Right.
Yeah, well, well, it, it's just gonna have to be a statement from here, because we can't change the minutes that we, that was already corrected.
Right, Chris, you follow that? Okay, all right.
And we'll get it, make sure it's in the minutes correct.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll reach out to you, make sure it's clear in the minutes next, when we get that done. Thank you, Pat. Uh, any other questions for Sheriff West? Quiet group today, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Be safe.
Uh, State's Attorney, you have a, your, you'll have a report a little later, so we'll just handle that then. Um, Treasurer's Office.
Good morning, Robin Schreick, Mead County Treasurer. I submitted my K. P. I., if you have any questions on those numbers, feel free to ask. We have been pretty busy down at the Treasurer's Office, we are getting ready. Um, effective July first, the state of South Dakota will implement a hundred-dollar fee for any out-of-state people that are registering their vehicles in our county or statewide. So we have, um, been telling people that have been calling in wanting to register from out-of-state that this will be implemented next week. Along with that hundred-dollar fee, the state will receive fifty of it, will receive fifty of it, and then we are also charging the twenty-five-dollar admin fee that was, um, a resolution that you signed a few years ago. And then we'll have the mailing fees on top of that. So it could be upwards of a hundred and thirty-some dollars for a person to register a vehicle, depending on, you know, mailing of plates and such.
This is primarily the U. T. V.'s type of things that are coming in, and people that are non-resident that are licensed?
Not necessarily, we're getting a lot of vehicles that are coming in, people from Colorado with the emissions test, they are checking out South Dakota to see where they can register their vehicle up here without having to go through that. So they are utilizing the state's open registration for that.
And not all counties are allowing that to happen?
That is correct, yes, only a handful throughout the state. And when somebody calls the state of South Dakota and asks which counties are allowing it, the state of South Dakota is saying you're gonna have to call each county, so they just start calling, whether it's alphabet, or just, you know, alphabetically, or just picking out a county that happens to have a well-known town that. We are getting a lot of A. T. Vs. being registered with the sticker, of course, um, to inform the public, last year Governor Noem, rather than doing a five-to-fifteen-day permit, she is now doing a sticker for a full year, which is fifty dollars. Out of that fifty dollars, if we do the handling, we get twenty-five of it, twenty-five goes to the state. If the state does everything, they get the full fifty dollars. So we created an email list, we have reached out to anybody that has done a past temporary permit or permit with us, reached out to them and encouraged them to continue to do that through our office, because that's just extra revenue in for the county.
You, you know, I wonder if it wouldn't hurt to do just a little side tick, and every now and then tell us how many of these out-of-state people we're getting, 'cause it might give us a, a true indication of how much extra we're getting off that wheel tax.
Absolutely, so starting next K. P. I., can I just go ahead and throw that in? I will do so.
I think, I, I think that'd be kind of good to know.
Absolutely.
Plus, it'd be good.
Absolutely. Um, I guess one last note, six oh five drive is moving into place, that's our new motor vehicle system that we'll be implementing next year. They are going to be come, um, coming into our office on July twelfth to job shadow, just to see what we do on a daily basis, if we do something different than another county, so they can make sure that the program that they are bringing forth next year is going to handle all the needs of all the different counties. So we have a pad down there that we're writing various questions, so we can ask the six oh five drive people different questions that we may have and how we'll resolve those, because the system is different from the one that we're using now.
And we'll have equipment costs with that as well, right?
It's, um, yes, there will be some equipment costs, we're looking at scanners, we'll need to have scanners by each one of the registers. I have been working with Tony on that. Um, the state of South Dakota is looking to see if there is some money out there for us to use that we can apply for and grab that. But that is still question mark.
We want to capture that for our budget.
Absolutely, yes, I will, I've been making the tweaks that I need to in that, yes.
Anything else for Treasurer's Office?
Up. Oh, thank you, thank you for bringing that up, I totally forgot about that, I even had a year.
At the last meeting, we had the gold and silver that the county acquired. I took down the gold and, the gold coin and the silver coins. I got bids from Dakota Coin and also the clock shop. With all the metal there, the clock shop offered six thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars and five cents. The Dakota Coin Company offered us seven thousand three hundred forty-six dollars. I put up in my K. P. I. how gold has been, the price of gold has been increasing, decreasing throughout the five years. I would like to get some guidance from the board, should I go ahead and cash this in now? Should I hold off? What would you like me to do at this point?
I wish I'd been Henry Brook and bought gold when it went online at thirty-two dollars an ounce. He tried to talk everybody into doing that.
I don't believe it was ever online at thirty-two dollars.
Well, wh- wh- whenever it opened way back.
In nineteen seventy-two.
When, whenever it was, I can remember him being in the office trying to talk Dad into, I, I think it's buried out there someplace, but.
Yeah.
This is amazing. I found it kind of sad that that individual had bought that gold coin off one of those shopping networks, and so I guess that would be buyers beware, don't buy off a shopping network.
That's what it is, um, for what it's worth, I think you should just sell it. There's no sense keeping it around, leaving it around where we're sitting on it, on speculation, and then you just have, then, then we just have to deal with it again down the line, and you get the time.
All right.
I would concur with that.
And both companies that you talked to are reputable companies.
Yes, yep.
I mean, that's, that's what their business is.
Yes.
I would agree. Pick the highest bidder and go.
Yeah, it's shocking how much it's gone up.
Okay, I will move forward on that as quickly as possible.
During, it's been fifty years since.
No, I, I, I'm talking about just since twenty, twenty to twenty-four.
Well.
Look at that difference in that.
Yeah, we'll go back a ways, and it was higher, yeah.
Oh, I know.
It's been up and down.
Anything else for Treasurer's Office? Nope, I think that's it, thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Uh, the human resources, uh, item was handled in the sheriff's office, I don't think we have anything else for the, the H. R. department?
Oh.
Okay, maybe we do.
No, I want to ask Pat some more. Those vehicles, were they badly damaged, or their windows out, or were they old vehicles or new vehicles?
Right now, uh, right now they're the older vehicles.
Oh, that's.
We didn't lose any windshields, but we lost some side-view mirrors, a couple, a lot of hail damage on top.
Yeah. Oh, that's good, so.
We'll let you sit down, Sheriff West, and then we might come up with something else.
Sorry about that.
Um, let's go down to E. one, the auditor's office.
So the city of Piedmont has notified us that they are going to have a hearing on June twenty-fifth for a proposed annexation which involves the subdivision known as Trails West subdivision. Um, I have included the notice from the city of Piedmont, and I've also included a map done by our planning department showing it's the yellow portion in the middle of your, of this current map that you're looking at.
I, I was curious, did, since it's kind of like.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Since that's surrounded by Somerset, did Somerset not want them?
So, I can give you some history on it.
I, I was hoping you would.
Somerset ha- has no interest in it because it's all residential, they only wanted. Historically, they only wanted it either new build or commercial. There's, uh, Trail West has various, um, infrastructure issues, so Somerset doesn't want a part of it, Piedmont's been helping them out for fifteen years, I think. Piedmont provides the bulk water over there, does the meters and everything. Sanitary district exists that technically they're, they're customers, but Piedmont does everything for them. Um, uh, the people of Trail West tried to voluntarily annex, they could get all the necessary signatures, but they have so many absentee landlords, they could never get the, uh, the valuation, um,
Really?
enough to sign off on the valuation for the invol- for the voluntary annexation. So, um, a group out of, uh, Trail West asked the city then to do an involuntary annexation, a group of the homeowners out of there. Um, um, 'cause like I said, the city's been helping them, there is an existing sanitary district that has to stay in place. Um, has to do when Trail West bought out the water system from the developer, that debt has to stay in place until it's paid off with the state, so. Note, there's one lot in Trail West that is not at the very tip on the, on the south, is not included, because that's already, that's in Somerset for some reason.
Little guy right down there?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, velvet. And this is all informational, so.
Yeah, because there's no ag ground.
Right.
The commission doesn't have, uh, doesn't have the power to modify boundaries.
I was just curious myself.
All of that area is on septic systems, is that correct?
On septic systems, like I said, there's a central water system.
They just redid it or something?
Fifteen years.
Pile of money into it.
What's that?
They just put a pile of money in.
Well, yeah, so they got a bunch of money from the state, 'cause they had to buy out the individual. They bought out the private owner, and then. All failed not that long afterwards, so that then went to Piedmont. Piedmont brought their water system across, I mean, across, so they feed into that. But then Piedmont cut a contract deal with them, provide all the billing and the collections, and then they back to the sanitary district. Even though they're billed through Piedmont, there's like a double of what Piedmont residents are, sanitary district.
Unlike what happened out at Murray.
Anything else in that? Go ahead, Rhea.
I've also put up the office overtime report by department. You will see that I can speak to the election department, that we've had a substantial amount of overtime. The auditor's office has had a substantial amount of overtime. Hopefully the election part is behind us now, and we are still short-staffed in the auditor's office, so there will continue to be overtime there.
Have you gotten candidates?
We do have some candidates that are in, indeed, honestly, I have not taken the time to, the ones that I looked at before, um, nothing stood out to me, but I haven't looked for a week or so. I need to make that a priority now that yesterday is.
Now that you're done with yesterday?
Yes. Want me to keep going, Gary?
Yes, yep, go ahead.
Item three is the Treasurer's A- Office recount results. We did have the recount yesterday with the board appointed by Judge Day consisting of Bob Havela, Marilyn Bates, and Barb Kessler. It took them about four hours and forty-five minutes to do the recount. Thirty-nine precincts were done through the tabulator, two were hand-counted because they were hand-counted originally, and I'm happy to report, uh, that there was no change in the way the voting turned out. And by that I mean, I'm happy to say that we didn't have discrepancies.
The vote numbers are the same.
It proves that.
Yes.
Maybe that's why we had no, a bleak input this one.
We did also have the voluntary post-election audit yesterday, which we did not have to do, but I wanted to actually do that to, to get verification that our machines are accurate. And of the three precincts that we drew, and the Democratic presidential race that was counted within those three precincts, and the other race, which was a committee precinct man, there were zero discrepancies, zero vote changes between the tabulator and the hand count.
So that was a hand count of those votes, and then compared back to the tabulators?
Correct. That was a five-person board also, that was appointed by me.
Uh, how long did it take to count those? There was not a lot of votes in there.
There was not a lot of votes in there, and it took about two hours.
Good, I'm glad the system's, uh, on par where we all thought it was.
I'm glad as well.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve voluntary post. From the, uh, audit that was completed on Monday for race for East Sturgis One and Southeast Piedmont, Black Hawk fifteen.
I'll second. Uh, Ken, you have something?
Procedural, I don't think there's any motions necessary. Uh, the post-audit election was a voluntary process, so there's no motion necessary with that. Uh, the recount is information only unless there is a change in the result.
Post-audit is, I thought, required under state statute.
Because, because we did have a recount in the treasurer's race, we were not mandated to do a post-election audit, that was a choice that we, that we made.
Uh, but I still believe it's.
Never mind. You're removing your motion then, I assume? Or it, it wouldn't hurt either way.
It, it's certainly allowed, I mean, just saying it's not necessary.
I think it's important to put it in so that, um, we have verification in our minutes, not just in board docs, et cetera, uh, to the authenticity of our results.
Okay, motion and second on the floor to, uh, approve the voluntary post-election audit results for those three races?
It was, it was two.
Excuse me, three precincts with the Democratic presidential race counted in those three precincts, because that was the only statewide race that we had, the other was a committee precinct man race that was drawn.
Okay. Regardless, uh, motion to approve the voluntary post-election audit results, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Anything else for the auditor? I'd like to add that, yeah, you, really, you, you're and your team did a tremendous job, and a lot of, uh, you guys are all pretty much new down there, and this election went off without a hitch, and there was actually people rooting against you, so it was, uh, it was, you guys did a tremendous job, so, everyone down there.
Is she still gonna give a report from the office, or?
Uh, yeah, do you have anything else to report from the office, Rhea?
Well, she's got the treasurer's.
We, we cover the treasurer again.
Would you like me to do it again?
I was just.
Uh, Don did apportioning for the first month, uh, on her own, so that was a big step for her. Um, accomplished with a little bit of help from Al, but Don did a tremendous job. Chris has been working on the court-appointed attorney's fees and costs, and actually spent a substantial amount of time on that this month. Like to add anything there, Chris? As you can see, we had two hundred and seventeen voter registrations that were processed. We also have about two hundred-plus more that are either in the queue or in, on paper in the office that need to be processed.
A few more hands over there, I think. A few more hands over there, anything? Anything else?
Does anybody have any actual questions for us? It seems like we've been running full bore, but we really don't have anything that's terribly exciting to report. We're getting ready for budget, that's the next, next exciting thing.
No questions for the auditor? Okay, well, thank you. Uh, let's move down to State's Attorney. Item F-one.
If I might, Mr. Chair, the plan was for Karen Hunt to present on behalf of the Northern Hills Drug Court.
Yes, sir.
Um, I've texted her to be here as promptly as she can. If this can be delayed a little bit, uh, procedural question for you to consider. This is a request for funds out of a, out of the opioid monies that is separately maintained. Um, we're making it out of the normal process, budget process. Uh, Buick County did it outside of the budget process, Lawrence County is doing it through the budget process. Because it was a separate fund and not general funds, we, we're bringing it this time rather than through the budget process. If the board desires it to be done during the budget process, just let us know and take it off today and come back. But like I said, I've texted her to be here early, so.
Okay, so she'll, she'll be here to discuss that then?
Yes.
And just for clarification, this will not affect the budget that was submitted, correct? This will be in addition to for a different project?
Correct. The UJS budget included, uh, a request for drug court and out of the opioid money as well, so when you consider the UJS budget, that would be not included in the UJS budget and just not approved for that additional.
Okay, well, if that's the case, let's move down to Highway G-one. Troy, are you ready?
Troy Eastman here with the Highway Department. Um, first agenda item is, uh, amendment to our five-year plan. This is just, uh, an addition to include a bridge that's on Antelope Creek that's now eligible for a big grant. So, we need to include it on our five-year plan in order to apply for preliminary engineering.
And, um, so, kind of my canned statement on this one is, this is a, uh, process that we have to do in order to keep these on the five-year plan, um, and, and makes it eligible for the grant funding.
Correct.
Um, not necessarily projects that we can afford to do all of those projects, but, uh, we have to have them on there to, for the paperwork side, so.
Yep.
Uh, I'll make a motion to appro- approve the amended five-year county.
Okay.
And authorize it to the chairman's side.
Motion in a second to approve the five-year plan, uh, to make this amendment to the five-year plan. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I do have a question, I, you get some calls about the, the bridge grant. Um, can you explain a little bit about the process of which bridges get selected and which do not and-
Sure.
Do you have, I kind of, I can have, have an idea, but, uh, nonetheless, I think there are people that once won't think someone's getting a favor and, and I don't think that's the case, but what, do you explain a little bit?
No, it's, we, um, hire a consultant that we, you know, select to go out and inspect these bridges either annually or every two years, depending on the condition. Once they reach a certain rating, um, for deficiencies, then it becomes annually that they have to go back and inspect just to keep a closer eye on them, to, you know, basically catch them before they're getting too bad. And then their point system, which they use, you know, it adds up, and then once it gets to a certain threshold, then it is eligible for a grant. And just because you're eligible doesn't mean you're gonna get it because everybody else has bridges in their counties as well, so they basically pick the worst or the ones that are, you know, need the most attention or immediate need, um, priority, I guess, however their system works. But, yeah, it's based on the inspections and the ratings that they get. And that's, Bros is the ones that go out and do this and they provide us an annual report, um, with the critical findings, and those are basically the ones that are usually eligible for it, or we need to go out and give that, that bridge attention sooner rather than later, which, you know, some of these, we've gotta do something before the grant money ever shows up bec- just, you know, it's not a perfect world by any, any means as far as getting these done on time. So, there's, sometimes it works out great and other times, you know, it's like we have to look at other alternatives too, so.
And it's, it's not, it's basically out of our hands which ones that, that get decided on. There's, uh, quite frankly, there's oftentimes there's bridges you would rather have fixed versus-
Oh, absolutely.
-that get the grant, isn't that correct?
Yep, that's right. I mean, yeah, this one here, I'm glad it finally made the list because this was one of my top priorities just because it's a high-traffic road and it's, has reduced weight limit on it right now, which makes it difficult for us and, you know, a lot of people to go around. So, yeah, this is, I'm glad it's on the list and I wish it was getting built this year, to be honest, so, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so one of the reasons we do the PE grants is to get us a better footing for the actual big grant portion. Um, it sets us a little bit higher on, um, expectancy rate for, for winning.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, some coun- some counties don't do that, they include it all in the big- thank you.
The next agenda item is our traffic count plan. Are there any questions?
I got a question on that Mountain Shadows road, is that, is that a Meade County-maintained road?
Um, Mountain Shadow, I'm trying to see where that's at.
Mountain Shadows is right outside of Piedmont.
Cause it's, it was just for a private development, basically, I was just-
Shows up there and loops around to a number of holes.
Not a great road.
Yeah, um-
Thought we did a bunch of work on it.
I know we've worked on it and I'm solicited, I'm just trying to think of, uh, I haven't really, I gotta have to look and see how much money, if we've spent any money maintaining it or blading it or, I know, it's on here, so, I mean, it has to be one of our roads. But there's a few of them, like East Ridge, that, again, it doesn't seem like a county road, but yet it's on our system and-
Well, any, any dedicated public right-of-way-
Is a, yeah.
Is a county road.
Right.
Just whether we maintain it.
Right.
And that's clearly a county road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know, I think when you get up in the subdivision, I think maybe it's got, I don't know if they go all the way down.
I was thinking we bladed it.
Cause it's not, it's not one with Magwater, usually when we cut roads with steeped thitters.
It's not that, it's not that steep a climb.
This is the, the longer one.
Oh.
And I think we do blade that one, um-
Not until you get up into the trees that it really gets some concern. So, from, if you look where he did his counts, that's not, that, that's an incline there, but it's not a good incline.
Oh, I think, I was thinking more on Blue, I was thinking more about Blue Ridge and Big Horn, those, those roads.
Yeah.
But Mountain Shadows is, yeah, okay.
What was that road that we redid your period?
High Meadows?
That's this other county.
Yeah.
And it has some-
It had some problems.
It still has some maintenance issues there.
Yeah.
It's steep, it's out there.
Yeah, yeah, it's very steep, windy, it goes from town to the mountains and, yeah, it's just a challenge.
Yeah, town, the mountains, the Forest Service, to, uh, subdivision.
About a two-mile stretch of road.
Um, I guess, what does it say on there? Where's, it's one of the ones we're just counting right now.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, yep. That's the same one that they're in here, um, asking to pave that section of here.
Yeah, except that's down on the bottom, it's right next to Pied, I mean, Somerset.
Right, yeah. The vor spot is up high, I mean, we fixed some drainage right there at the bottom, um, just cause the ditches had filled in over time as it eroded down and basically the ditches were gone and we found old culverts and stuff that were just literally covered up. So, we, we've cleaned out that portion, but it all starts up the hill and, I mean, it's, that's an ongoing battle, so.
Yeah, that stuff at the bottom going back to the subdivisions behind Somerset, subdivisions back, you know, before you start going up the hill, goes back right up to Somerset and that road goes through part of Somerset. And, I mean, I, I don't see any reason for the county to be paving that road, I mean, really, if, you know, it, that really should be a road taken over by Somerset at least to the foot of the mountains at some point.
I agree.
Anything else for Highway? Thanks, Troy.
You bet, thank you.
It's, uh, bouncing all over today. Uh, Mr. Clunder, would you be ready or is everyone here that would need to hear your presentation? Okay, well, if you, we could just jump down to, uh, hoping, uh, Sean Henderson was up here, I'll text him quick and, we can move down to D-one and on the agenda.
Which one, D-one?
Uh, D-one.
Morning. Good morning. My name's Kurt Clunder, I'm the Fire Chief for Black Hawk Volunteer Fire Department. With this past week, um, this has been going on for several weeks now, unknown to local volunteer fire departments. We have its NFPA standards, National Fire Protection Association standards, that fire departments must follow, um, certain categories. One of the categories is, um, or take for instance, uh, PP, personal protective equipment, our bunker gear, helmets, boots, breathing apparatus and all that. Currently, the standard is after ten years, um, it is no longer effective, so you have to replace it, um, either find grants or try to find money to do that. One thing that, uh, I was privileged with, with Black Hawk, similar to North Haynes, um, New Underwood, Box Elder, we cover quite a bit of Meade County. Like with, with Black Hawk, I have a very small portion of Painted County that I serve, um, but the majority of the, the department covers Meade County. So, we're kind of in that quandary. But I did go to a Painted County meeting, um, a week ago, Monday, and, uh, the Fire Chief for Rapid Valley, Joe Jaden, is very much an expert with it. By the way, I wanted him to come today to kind of talk to all the elected officials, um, but, uh, he was working today, so I apologize for that. One of the things that, uh, all the fire chiefs nationwide will say is that we're not trying to cut for safety of our firefighters. We are not trying to cut that. One of the things that we're looking at is with, uh, OSHA, um, they're kind of getting their feet in there, um, and wanna make stuff different. Currently, a fire apparatus, a, a structure truck, a big one, um, must be replaced every twenty years according to NFPA. But OSHA now says, um, it will, shall be replaced in ten years.
Hmm.
Um, so, the wording's different, that you should or shall, um, is coming down to, it can be a detriment to our volunteers, not only in Meade County, but also nationwide itself. Take for instance, I'm very familiar with Black Hawk, Piedmont and, and Sturgis and a little bit with Eanning. Um, if Eanning was put to that point, um, I don't think they could, uh, could, could survive. Um, they're not a tax district like Black Hawk and Piedmont are, and so whatever they get to, to build a, a garage or get new trucks or fix trucks comes directly from donations. So, this could be. The other thing that, uh-
What would you estimate the average life of most trucks, most departments is?
Um-
I mean, I, I'd be surprised if-
Different factors-
They were less than ten years old.
Different factors is that, uh, um, like your private vehicle gets driven every day. Um, fire trucks don't get driven every day. The other thing is with fortune with Black Hawk Fire Department is that we have three full-time, uh, uh, mechanics on Monday through Friday. And so, they keep up on that s- uh, minor little details like a turn signal or electrical short, they get it fixed right away. But you look at different volunteers that, um, take for example, Eanning. Um, I just throw out a number, let's say ninety percent of the people are ranchers. Well, cabin seizing, all this other stuff happens, they can't get down there because they're trying to make their business go. And so, trucks like that, if you don't get something fixed right away, they don't go out as far. We just traded in a truck two years ago that was twenty-two years old and, uh, it went to another department and they loved it. And so, but the maintenance was great.
Are you in contact with Thune and Rounds and Dusty Johnson?
Not right now.
Is that-
The, the Painted County Board, okay, I should back up a little bit. Um, with Painted County, we have Painted County Fire Chiefs and also Painted County Firefighters Association. Those two boards are gonna be starting to look at there. Cause you look at the letter, um, comment period for this is up until July twenty-second. And so, the more elected officials that can send letters to them, as you see in your packet, that there was actually a, a letter that we, that, uh, Painted County wrote, they're currently having their, their legal team look at it. And the reason that they haven't went with it yet is that, uh, they only meet every two weeks. And so, this next, um, Monday is when they're gonna officially adopt it and then send a letter. Um, they just wanted to make sure legal and everything was, was okay with it, um, in which I could see that with this, this group too. But it just comes down to, the other thing that, uh, um, you should have in your packet, um, a little thing like this, didn't you? Sorry. I'll leave a copy with it so you can get it to them, okay? What it is, is that different highlighted items that, uh, will pertain to, um, the different items. So, like gre- green items, uh, which are being done now, um, yellow items can done with time, uh, pink with, uh, items which are financially limited, blue will be limited by questions or issues beyond money, and then red, which cannot be done. For example, we already have a mutual aid agreement with the Meade County. Um, it, it comes down to, according to the state statute, is that you have to have mutual aid agreement, uh, for like Black Hawk to go help with Sturgis, to Eanning and stuff like that. Um, what the mutual aid agreement says is that we will come by, uh, come back or I'll come help you, uh, when your, your resources are very limited, grass fires, house fires, um, floods like has happened on east part of the state, and we don't expect payment at all for it. And so, that's a mutual aid agreement. One of the things that we're looking at, minimum staffing, which this is a, a, uh, item that will be, cannot be done. With State of South Dakota, their statute is that, um, volunteer firefighters are basically paid positions. That is why with Meade County, um, the commission and also taxpayers of Meade County provides work comp for volunteer fire departments. So, it doesn't really define on are they state employees or the Meade County employees or are they department employees? And so, that is a big thing that, that we're trying to figure out down the road. But they're saying is that minimum staffing for a truck to go out the door is four.
Hmm.
Um, Black Hawk, Sturgis, Piedmont, we can do that pretty easily. Let's say it's the middle of cabin season for Eanning, you might get one person or two person to go out for a grass fire. And so, it, it just comes down to, um, the, the rules that they're putting on, can be obtained with bigger departments, um, not small rural, uh, departments like we have ma- uh, majority here. The other one is that, um, we try to do our best when we get volunteer firemen on, uh, new candidates on the fire department, um, we ask them, do you have any health-related stuff and all this other stuff, but we don't put them through a physical. Their current NFPA standard says, um, you should have a physical for this firefighter before you get them on, should. Um, OSHA wants to change it to shall, so you'll have to do that. So, basically, you're looking at five hundred to a thousand dollars for every person on the fire department that will have to have a, a physical before they get on the fire department. Also with, uh, the OSHA standards is that they want you to have, uh, physicals every two years. The other big thing is anytime that we get into a, a toxic environment, so we go to a house fire or anything with smoke, it's a toxic environment. Um, after fifteen exposures, they want us to do another physical exam. Um, I see that the reasoning that they want is, is try to reduce cancer in the fire service, but there again, uh, my budget for Black Hawk Fire Department can't handle that. Um, it, it just won't do that unless we raise taxes triple what we're doing now. So, that's not an option. One other part in there, it's, uh, NFPA nineteen-eleven, that has to do with, uh, fire apparatus. But the fire apparatus now is that, we kind of talked about that, is, uh, NFPA says you should replace it after, should replace after twenty years. Um, there actually, OSHA's going with ten years. Um, the other thing that is, is, came out of left field that I just realized or I, uh, found out, is that after twenty thirty-five, um, all fire trucks have to be electric vehicles.
Yeah.
Twenty thirty-five, all fire trucks have to be electric vehicles. So, I'm asking you as a commission to look at the, the template, if you'd like to do that, write it up, um, in Meade County, uh, heading and all that stuff, and send it to the, the, uh, OSHA or to this review committee. Because South Dakota is a wonderful place to live, I love living in this area, but now you're starting to put more and more, um, limitations on me as a fire chief that I cannot obtain or, or even achieve doing that. And so, with respect, if you would look at that stuff, kind of talk about it, um- But now you're starting to put more and more, um, limitations on me as a fire chief that I cannot obtain or, or even achieve doing that. And so with respect, if you would look at that stuff, kind of talk about it, um, and see if you want to do something with that. With that, do you have any questions?
You know, I, I would like to hear a little bit from Scott too.
Sure.
The-
He said he didn't want to talk, but-
Well, I know.
But he, but he's here.
But he's here. He came. What do I want to know? I, I, I want to know how some of these, uh, uh, stats, Linder told us how they impacted Blackhawk. Do they impact-
Yeah, they're going to impact everybody. This is a whole nationwide thing.
Scott, could you please identify yourself for the-
Scott Lindberg, Sturgis Fire Chief in Mead County.
Thank you.
Firefighter, um, president, board president. This will affect everybody throughout the whole country. What it is, is if they approve this OSHA, all the NFPA standards that are out there, kind of like you said, should and stuff, they'll all become law and there's no way we can get around them. So if, like I said, if OSHA gets this approved and gets it pushed through, you know, there's be nothing that anybody can do about it. And it's going to run volunteer fire departments out of business. And one thing OSHA is going off, they're saying that everybody's running off of, what, I think a one point two, one point three million dollar budget, which we all know in South Dakota, especially what you know for Mead County, that is not even close to being feasible. So they're trying to take all this off that, those kind of numbers for the whole United States, which is not feasible for us. So like what Kurt was discussing and telling you that this, this will run us out. If you read that form letter in there, the OSHA's talking about, you know, that physical, what they want's like between a twelve hundred and fourteen hundred dollars apiece. Well, with my budget, there's no way I could even put my guys through a physical. By the time I got that done, we'd be broke. We look out at Eanning, Union Center, we got seventy-five firefighters out there. You put that times seventy-five, there's no way they're going to be able to do anything with it. And like, you know, I come to you every year for more money. Are you going to be able to be, be able to provide that money for every department in Mead County?
So I got a question. Um, are, are you wanting Mead County to draft a letter to send to OSHA? I mean, I was wondering if, if maybe the fire department could draft a letter and then we could, you know, read it and prove it. But, cause you guys know some-
The weight of a volunteer fire department, you look at nationwide, is there, it's, there's no weight. Now elected officials that, um, the largest county i- in South Dakota, um, that will have the weight of a lot of different things. That's where Painted County Commissioners are looking at that, uh, Mead County if you choose to do that. Um, I don't have any contacts with Lawrence County. And so it just comes down to hopefully other fire chiefs will, will go to their elected officials and say, this is what we need to really look at.
Yeah, our governor needs to step up.
Yeah, our governor does.
To in, in address this, you know, along with our, with the, you know, Thune and Rounds and Johnson. You know, they need to, but I was just wondering if the county, if, you know, if, if we could write an, an appropriate letter since you guys know all the issues that-
I think Ken could-
Well, Scott, if you had, if you would want to help with that letter from, coming from the county, we'd appreciate it. That, I think that would help us get to what we need. You got the form basically here already, don't you, Mr. Klunder?
Yes, yes.
Uh, but if Scott could take a look at it and, and-
I'll take a look at it. I'm sorry, I'm unprepared with this. Kurt called me last night.
Sure.
I've been dealing, looking into the OSHA two in, two out rule, which throughout the nation, fire chiefs and everything are stepping up trying to get rid of that. Because if OSHA gets that approved, like if I show up to a house, if, if I can't physically see somebody or somebody's not there physically telling me there's somebody trapped, I can't go inside of a house anymore. So they're going to cause more, you know, public deaths and stuff like that, so.
Cause right now it says two in, two out is should.
Well, in, in South Dakota, I can just see us all going up in flames.
Instead of shall, and they want to make it shall.
In, in, instead of protecting anybody from fire, we're just going to burn. I mean-
Yeah, and I'd be more than happy-
Our department should be non-existent.
Uh, work with you. If you have any questions, give me a call or we can sit down, have a meeting and go with that. And I'm going to get more prepared with this. I'm going to get ahold of a lot more fire chiefs throughout the, our local area and try to get them together so we can come together as a group also and be a stronger front. So-
I, I, I think one thing we also, uh, would be good to have with this would be a few statistics as far as, um, the amount of engines in Mead County that would even conform to this, uh-
I can tell you-
I can tell you right now, zero.
Yeah.
Zero.
Out in the county.
At Hereford, I know we're, I don't think we'd have, in fact, we are driving, uh, forty-year-old pickups here.
Sure.
Just before, we're in, we just got, uh, a truck handed down from us from another fire department that we, we, they gave us a deal on. Um, yeah, people are always gracious enough, when you're driving a eighty-three Chevy pickup, they're always gracious enough to get over when you have your lights on. But they can't stay behind you much longer. They end up passing you because you're-
Can't go very fast.
Because you can't go very fast.
And if this gets through too, it, I, from what I understand too, that there'll be kind of a conformed type of a apparatus you could buy. So it's going to be, and you know, brush trucks right now, they're over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to, you know, a hundred to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars if you have to buy one. If you can't, and you can't make them yourself anymore.
Well, I, I think it would be good to be to give some specifics. Uh, y- you mentioned, um, e- even the number of volunteer firefighters that we have in Mead County. It's a couple hundred I know, but I don't have that, that exact number. Um, if we can do that and the number of units, I mean, if we can have some of those specifics to add to the letter, that would be good.
And you said the twenty second, Mr. Klunder, was that the-
July twenty-second, it is, uh- It, it was June twenty-first or twenty-second, but then they wanted to leave it out for further, um, public comment, so they extended it.
So we'll have to have a letter by our next meeting, which is on the ninth of July. Is there a statewide group for the fire association?
There is the South Dakota Fires, uh, Fighters Association and, uh, I don't really have, talked to them. I can get ahold of the, the, I think it's the treasurer now and see what, uh, their position is.
I mean, it seems like, so like you, you guys mentioned, um, the rural side of this is, it's just going to kill them.
It is.
Um, the, the bigger cities maybe is a, is a different thing, but, uh, all of South Dakota, this is a problem. All of Wyoming, this is a problem.
They're trying to make every department go to the standards of a full-time department. Basically you'll see, Sea Falls, Brookings, Aberdeen, Aberdeen, um, Rapid City would survive. And so then Rapid City, we already know that they're already stretched thin by the ambulance service and other things. And just one more thing, it's like if all the, the fire departments close down, it's like-
Right.
It's going to be a two-hour delay before services will get there.
I would reach out to the legislators and also to that, the state board.
My cohort with Painted County, Chief Joe Jaden, um, I'm not sure where he's at, but I will get ahold of him today to see where he's at. And then bring back a recommendation to this board and say, this is probably what we should start looking at too.
Cause I, I think everybody on the board, it seems like they're on board with, you know, signing a letter, but, um, I think this is probably a bigger issue than just our county.
It, it, isn't the state fire school in June?
It was already, yes.
Oh, it already was?
Mm-hmm.
Did they take no position?
Wasn't even brought up. Tell you the truth, I don't think they even know what's going on until two weeks ago, Scott and I did not know anything about it. Um, our departments are fairly decent size and so, um, here in Mead County, it's like, we didn't know about it. I was totally caught off guard because, like I said, I've been fully involved with this two in, two out rule. And then, uh, I finished up a class the other day and one of the state firefighters asked me if I knew anything that's going on. I'm like, oh yeah, the two in, two out rule, we've been fighting against that. And he's like, no, it's much bigger than that. And I'm like, oh no.
Any other questions for Mr. Klunder or Mr. Lindberg? Um, I guess if, if the two of you would like to help, uh, Doreen, you're the, uh, liaison of that department, I'd be happy to help out with that department since I-
I'm the li- liaison?
Of the emerg-
Oh, of the emergency, well, yeah.
So if you'd like to help-
I, I will take on the fires.
If you'd like to help with that, uh, I'd be happy to help you guys with that. We'd, we'll help, uh, Ken, we'll get with you sometime and, and we'll probably copy it off that form letter and, and go from there. Try to get it to fit Mead County.
And in the meantime, I'll get ahold of Painted County and the State Fire Fighters Association and, and see where they're at too.
Sure. Appreciate that.
I'm not a politician, so I don't have a political bone in my body that, uh, I need to talk to Governor Rounds or, uh, yeah, Governor Noem and stuff like that. So maybe I could use some assistance or find somebody to help.
Sure, appreciate it.
And, and we won't use a form letter because they will be ignored.
Great. We'll just go from there. It'll have to be done by our next meeting because, uh, the meeting after that will be the twenty-third of July.
So ninth of July is your next meeting.
Ninth of July is the next meeting.
Okay. Yep.
Appreciate, appreciate you guys coming in and your time.
We just want to have a strong front, so try to cut this off before it happens.
Certainly, um, thank you guys. Uh, let's skip down to, uh, I, uh, we do have a ten o'clock hearing, but, uh, uh, our EM director and VSO officer's got a pretty busy schedule today. So let's, let's take, uh, item H one, it's, it's, we're talking about fires, so let's just go right into that. So, uh, Sean, would you come up? Are you ready to talk about that resolution and?
Yes, I, I brought it.
Okay.
Came to support them, but I'm ready for this too, so.
Hey, let's, let's try to keep this as brief as we can, because we do have a ten o'clock hearing.
Bet. Uh, Sean Henderson, Mead County Emergency Manager and Veteran Service Officer. Um, so this resolution, uh, I'm presenting is twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, uh, Commission Appointed Designee for Rangeland Fire Protection Agreement. Um, Rangeland and Wildland Fire seem to be used interchangeably for the public. Um, uh, so this resolution came from, uh, the Fire Management Office, Officer Tim Daly from the Wildland Fire Division in Rapid City. Uh, in a nutshell, this resolution, um, uh, specifies individuals that can order, um, certain, uh, assets for fighting wildland fires, such as the seaplanes, right, which cost money. Um, so this resolution specifies that the, uh, Chairperson of the Board, the Mead County Sheriff, the Mead County Deputy, Chief Deputy, and the Chairperson of the Mead County Firefighters Association are authorized to act upon approval from no less than two Mead County Commissioners on behalf of the county and handling administrative matters specifically related to the Rangeland Fire Agreement. In a nutshell, does that-
Okay, but, okay, it's a question, so, but you could act without any kind of permission from the commission?
Um, that is incorrect.
That's not how this reads. Cause it says that Mead County Emergency Manager is appointed as a rural, secondary points of contact. And then only, that's in the same sense as the secondary point. You're correct.
I implied, uh, that it would be the Emergency Manager or, uh, I guess I didn't write that correctly.
It should probably be, uh-
That's not how it reads.
Yeah, you're, and Talbot's correct, uh, and I did miss that. Uh-
I did too.
More than likely, it should just say the points of contact would be, uh, Emergency Manager and included in that group. Talbot, would that fix that?
Well, I think what you got to say is probably that the, uh, Mead County Emergency Manager is appointed. Um, and then, July, um, and that there's secondary points of contact, blah, da, 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 da. Um, it, it, it either got to be part of the same sentence that references it, but when you read that, because it says it's pointed, it's, it appears the way I read it is only the secondary points of contact.
I, I, I completely, uh, see what you're saying there. How I read it was that the Emergency Manager, it's affirmed that they're appointed as the rural fire coordinator for, for Mead County. And as far as the responsibilities, they're, it's kind of grouped up with the primary and secondary. It's a little redundant to say primary and secondary though. So I can remove that language if you'd like.
Well, I think maybe where you do it is you, where you start, the secondary points of contact, including, because I understand that there would be like, if they can't get ahold of you, you go to the secondary point. Correct?
Yep, that logically, uh, that, that's, that's correct. However, the, the bottom line is, is, um, we kept the positions vague instead of Sean Henderson and Pat West and so forth.
Yeah, oh, that's fine. I, I understand.
And, um, uh, the, the, the end result is that two commissioners have to be notified before we pull the trigger on.
That's not how it reads.
Okay, I can-
So, uh, could we, could we put a sentence, uh, hereby authorized to act, put a, put a period after that? Um, uh, and put, uh, all points of contact, including the rural fire coordinator, uh, has, must have approval from no less than two Mead County Commissioners? Would that do it, Talbot?
It, it might be, if, if I can suggest something, instead of even the, the words of the secondary points of contact, if you just take out secondary, add Emergency Manager and the points of contact, including the Emergency Manager, also the Chairperson of the Board, Mead County Sheriff and so forth. Would that kind of clear it up, you think?
Okay, let's, sure, what you added to me.
Have you looked at this?
Uh, uh, yeah, I did too and I missed it.
The Mead County Emergency Manager, including Chairperson, Mead County Sheriff, Mead County Deputy, Chairperson of Mead County Firefighters Association are the primary contact.
Well, so my question is, okay, what are we trying to accomplish here? We have a primary contact, is the second, when you say secondary con, point of contact, that implies to me that if, that they're available for the primary contact.
Like a redundancy.
Right. But then the way, but then I thought the commission's position was, nobody can order it without at least two, because of the, the budget here. You'd have to have two county commissioners per.
Oh, I got it.
And so, um, so part of the problem you got, if you got the Chairman of the Mead County Commission Board is one of the, you'd have to count him as one, otherwise you'd have to call a meeting because then you'd have quorum, taking action by quorum.
End up with three, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, but I, my understanding was we always had to have two, but it would look like to me that that condition of two is only on the secondary point.
Um, I, I think it's got to be two commissioners have to approve it, um, wording you guys can work through.
Okay, so if, but, but Sean would have authority on his own without going to the commissioner?
I don't, no, that's-
Okay, okay, that's-
That's, that's the issue when I read it.
That's the issue that Talbot was pointing out.
There's extra language in there that probably is redundant.
Why don't we eliminate the word secondary points?
I, I, I will work on the wording.
Yeah, let's work on it back.
If, if unavailable, if the, uh, Mead County Emergency Manager is unavailable, secondary points of contact are-
Let's just bring it back because we're-
Period.
And then, then another final sentence is, the authorization has to be approved by two county commissioners.
Bring it back. I was hoping I have it done with, with the dry conditions starting, but let's, it's going to be easier, it's going to be easier to-
Put an emergency clause on it.
Your question, Rich, is whether I reviewed it. I had for legal, but I mean, this is structural. It, it's just word choice, so we will get her done.
Get it done by next, we'll have it done by the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, if, could it come back yet today if they were able to make a correction or a change?
Certainly.
Yeah.
Yeah, hold off on that, right?
Certainly, so we won't do anything today, so.
Well, um-
Or excuse me, right now.
Remind.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, so, sorry, I, I read that the other day and I, I thought, I, I, and I couldn't remember whether we changed up that or-
You're right, let's go to our ten o'clock hearing.
Um, Ken?
If you're available, we'll work on it.
Um-
I know your schedule.
What, what I, what I was thinking of afterwards, since the fourth of July is coming, can we put an emergency clause on this so it could go into effect right away?
Okay, yes.
Go to our ten o'clock hearing, which is continue and close, continue and or close the hearing for malt beverage license renewals.
Mr. Chair, I have received no more malt beverage applications, renewal applications, so I'm requesting that you do close the hearing. I have been in contact with the state about what to do for those entities that have not made renewal application. I did send an email to you and Ken and I will work through who actually can continue to sell under the licenses that they have and who cannot.
Um, and how many current license holders are we talking?
I believe four.
Four that did not seek renewal.
Correct. And given the language from Lara, uh, from Department of Revenue, there are some that may not actually need to make renewals, depending on the other types of licenses that they hold.
Of the four, how many also hold liquor licenses?
I can't say for certain. I know of one. I will need to research that.
I'll make a motion that-
But I get, I got to ask if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak to this hearing? Seeing nobody from the public like to speak to this.
I'll make a motion that we close the hearing for malt beverage license renewal.
Second. Motion, second on the floor to close, uh, the hearing for the malt beverage license renewals. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Let's, uh-
Let's, uh, let's take about a ten-minute break. And we'll jump to, our next on the agenda will be Commission, aye. Uh, oh. Yeah, we'll go to F one next.
Oh, you got a new truck? How... No, I had no idea. I'm trying to work on it.
Uh, rain, actually, we got some rain, too, decent rain, um... I mean, Simon. Oh. Yeah, but, uh... Oh, yeah, I heard Summer said a lot of people had...
Um, Talbot, I know you don't, um, read Facebook. I know you don't read Facebook, but there was a comment that I thought I might send you. I sent this to, um...
I know, and they sent them to our house, too, or at least...
Yeah, I get them, too.
Huh? Oh, oh.
Wrong evil brother, wrong girls. Wow. Uh, just because he's evil doesn't mean he's not honorable. Ken? Yeah. Take a look at thirteen thirty-one, three. I call the meeting back to order, uh, it's, it's next on our agenda. I did skip over item F one. Uh, State Attorney could be ready. Handle that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is put under the State's Attorney's Office, um, because I'm on the Drug Court team, uh, and we have a representative of both the prosecutors and defense that's on the Drug Court team. Karen Hunt represents the defense and put together the presentation. I helped her with some of the data, and I acquired additional data after she submitted her letter, so I will have Karen lead.
Thank you very much. I'm pleased to be here today. Um, we understand that Mead County has funds that has been provided through the opioid settlement, um, and we believe that the Northern Hills Drug Court program fits squarely into that as far as a, an appropriate use of that money. Um, I believe Ken provided you with the Memorandum of Understanding, which is the agreement, um, that the state and all the counties entered into as far as how these funds would be used. And I would pour, appoint you specifically to page fourteen, um, section D, subsection three.
Different attachment?
Oh, it, uh, this...
Um, the settlement of approved users, yes.
Okay, exhibit A, um, to this, to the Memorandum of Understanding, page fourteen of this particular document, um, refers specifically towards the use of these funds to support treatment and recovery courts that provide evidence-based options for persons with opioid use disorders and any other co-occurring substance use disorders, mental health conditions. Um, I'm not sure if you're at all familiar with the Northern Hills Drug Court. Um, it was one of the, it was the first drug court established in South Dakota. It was kind of a project of Ron Merwin and Bruce Hubbard's many years ago, but it continues to operate here. And, um, we just wanted to give you a little information about the program, um, and specifically we're requesting at this point that we receive the amount of seventy-five-hundred dollars. Um, basically, just generally speaking, individuals who are facing felony criminal charges related to drugs, um, and who are also diagnosed with a severe substance use disorder can apply for the Drug Court program. If the Circuit Court deems that appropriate, um, they are sentenced to a suspended prison term, suspended based on the fact that they complete the Drug Court program. Um, while they're in Drug Court, they have a full range of substance use treatment. They also have access to mental health services. Um, our goal is to provide that treatment, but it's also to assist participants in building a stable and safe sober life that they can maintain after they finish Drug Court. Um, Drug Court, um, can take a period of, it takes a minimum of fourteen months. So, they're involved with court appearances, supervision by court services, uh, the various treatment programs, which ranges from inpatient to, um, other programs such as seeking safety and corrective thinking. Um, services are provided here in Sturgis, um, through Compass Point, um, which also sees patients in Spearfish. Um, again, Northern Hills, we're largely talking about Mead, Butte, and Lawrence Counties. In fact, the participants have to live in one of those counties to receive services. Um, treatment is also provided from, uh, through the Action for Betterment of the Community here in Sturgis and up at, um, New Dawn and Nisland. Um, they also can receive inpatient services. Um, they're referred really in that case to wherever they can get treatment as quickly as possible. They can receive mental health services, which are provided through West River Mental Health in Spearfish and Jeff DeCry here in Sturgis. Um, supervision is the other component. Um, they're subject to random drug tests throughout the program. They have to maintain daily contact with, uh, their court services officer. Again, we're trying to teach them a new lifestyle, not just provide them with treatment. Um, Drug Courts operate under the best practice standards, um, which is established nationally based on research about how people can learn and maintain sobriety. Um, and we, um, as part of that process, um, it's, the Drug Courts operated by a team. Um, Ken says I should speed this up. So, really quick. Um, basically, we're here to ask for the money for two reasons. Um, it's a state-funded program through the unified judicial system. Um, but there are some things we don't have state funding for. Specifically, as indicated in the letter, some of our participants come with absolutely no resources. So, it's helpful if we can assist them. And we're, we're well-versed in the other kinds of assistance that's out there, but perhaps we're gonna help them with interim finance, financing for housing. We might help them with a car repair. In the beginning, that might be a grant. Uh, later on, when they are working, which is a requirement of the program, it may come in the form of a loan. Um, we assist with other things like funding for GEDs. Um, we might assist with daycare, whatever resources they might need some assistance with. Um, again, in the end, those will look more like loans than they do, um, gifts, I guess, or grants. Um, the other piece of the puzzle is that in order to teach individuals, um, or to encourage them in their recovery, we do provide an incentive program. So, if someone has accomplished a goal, we'd like to be able to give them a small token. It may, and it's, sometimes it's just a verbal affirmation, but we also sometimes provide small gift cards, five dollars, ten dollars, um, bowling certificates. Um, some of those are contributed by others, but basically, we like to be able to provide them with some kind of recognition of their efforts. Um, so, the money would also be used as those incentives. Um, obviously, I have more here. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Um...
And, and again, I just want to emphasize, you know, this is, but our request is not replacing anything that UJS has an obligation to do. It's providing things that UJS cannot do. Um, so, in the past, we've had, uh, uh, grants from the Vicarage Foundation. Uh, they have done nine thousand a year for the past umpteen number of years. We are not eligible in the future anymore. They have shifted away from providing grants to specialty courts across the country. So, it's not just us, but they're not doing it anymore. So, we're looking for a replacement source of funds with a bump reflecting inflation. You know, a ten dollar, a five-dollar McDonald's card used to almost get you lunch, and now you need three of them before you can go there. So, we are asking for a little bit more. Um, money-wise, we get, uh, we get distributions through the state, and we get them from eight different settlements that have, have occurred. Settlements or bankruptcies that have occurred. These settlements, uh, payments will continue from as little as six annual payments to as many as eighteen annual payments. So, how much we get each year is gonna vary, uh, depending on which funds drop off. We get these in lump sum, so I, it's hard to identify what money we're getting from what settlement, because the state just lumps it together and they'll send us a ninety-nine thousand dollar check, which represents five different funds. Uh, to date, working with the Treasurer and the Auditor, uh, the county has received a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars in opioid settlement money, which is restricted use to the approved uses that were shown on the exhibit. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, year-to-date, we have received a hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. Basically, some of them just started paying. So, we will, we have this as a stream of money into the future. Um, obviously, we need to make an annual request because you can't bind a future board to, to a payment. We have a total request we're trying to raise between three counties of fifteen thousand. We're asking Mead County to represent fifty percent of that because of the percentages of the distribution that everybody gets. We get three point two percent... We get three point two percent, uh, Butte County gets point eight nine, and Lawrence gets two point three eight percent of the total settlement money in. We get about roughly half of what the three counties get. Therefore, we're requesting seventy-five hundred dollars from Meade, from Meade County.
Questions, thoughts, comments from the Commission?
So if we approve this, is, uh, do we have a budgeted item where we take this out of, or it's come out of contingency?
I would assume it would come out of the actual opioid fund.
Okay, so, but that's in the budget?
It is not.
It is not a budgeted item.
Right. So we have to take it somewhere out of our budget and then we got, we can refund those funds out of that restricted funds. We can move them back into contingency?
That would work.
Yeah. Well, the question is, if I make a motion to approve this, should I also include where we're taking the funds from?
I think that's a great idea. Now we have that documentation.
Yeah. Make hell happy. Okay, well, all right.
And just as a highlight, I mean, this is in the others fund down in the Treasurer's office. It's not the specific designated account.
The funds are restricted.
Yes.
Yes.
And, and we can't, I mean, you know, we have to remember that those funds are building up now, but at some day they're going to stop.
Correct.
And so this is something that we can use for these funds going forward.
And we're looking at possible other uses. I mean, the sheriff was here and asked for a van. You know, but I think it's perfectly appropriate for him to come back and say, would you approve funding for, uh, travel expenses and, uh, you know, mileage and hours when they have to transport? You know, so we're looking at other uses. There's a lot more money than we thought.
He can always ask.
Yes, understood.
Gary's going to yell at you because he might.
I'm not. I'm the least of your worries. You don't talk in your mic.
Yes, and it just has to be approved by the board. You know, that's, you know, your interpretations and we do an annual reporting. There's no real audit of the uses except by other participants. So if we see what Pennington County is spending money on and we don't like it, well, we can make an objection. But realistically, nothing happens.
Do we support Northern Hills Drug Court in, uh, non-mandated funding?
We do not.
Okay. Have, have you made requests?
We have not because we had the, the, the funding. We also get money, um, Bruce Hubbard left a legacy for the Drug Court. And, um, most years we've gotten something from these.
The Sturgis Rally.
From the Sturgis Rally Funds, relatively small.
It wasn't necessary until now. Is that my understanding?
Uh, yes. Yeah. And of course, the funds were, you know, we just started getting funds in twenty-twenty-two. We got a little trickle then and the vast majority of what we have is, came in this year, year-to-date.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, interaction?
I'll make a motion to approve the request for financial support.
I know what I'm reading your mind.
In the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars, uh, to the, the Drug Court, with the funds to come out of contingency, but specifically the source funds then to be replenished from the opioid settlement fund documents. Or, excuse me, open opioid settlement funds that are restricted to these types of things. Does that make sense?
It does make sense.
Did you get that motion, Chris?
Did you get it reined second or did you want me to repeat?
And I will still second, I will still second it after hearing it. And I sent you all an email you need to read.
Okay, so would you repeat the motion? That was kind of lengthy, Chris. If you could read that back to us, please.
Aided by the word Gary.
Okay. Motion to approve the request for financial support, um, budgeted through the funds that come out of contingencies specifically for the opioid settlement funds allocated to the county in the, for remeditation, uh, remedit, meditation efforts of, um, seventy-five.
Seventy-five hundred?
Hundred. Got it. I got it, hundred.
That works, Talbot.
I think it works. I'm like.
I think we're just missing the word replaced by.
Yeah, I think the problem is the funds have to, they come out of our budgeted contingency funds, which are general funds. But then the motion then requires that to be replaced by funds from, uh, opioid settlement, which are restricted.
That change made, Chris? Uh, the motion is second on the floor. Uh, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ho, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Bring this down to, uh, agenda item I one, uh, Communicate and Commission. This is basically just updating us that, uh, roads would be closed. I assume we got this update, not because we're the county, it's just because we have, we own the property along.
Yes.
Everybody.
It's adjacent to county property.
So it's just, uh, letting us know that, uh, they're going to have a motorcycle race out in front of us. We could sell tickets right here, couldn't we?
Yeah.
People will be camping on our lawn. Uh, well, maybe not camping, but. Hitting.
Uh, unless there's anything else we need to discuss on that, uh, we'll go down to item I two. I assume most everybody is, and the public is here to talk about this. Uh, let's try to, uh, handle this with a little structure. Uh, it's a reconsideration of vacation of section line. Uh, it was a decision the Commission made on May fourteenth, wasn't that correct? That the Commission voted to vacate the section line. Uh, we chose last meeting to, uh, possibly reconsider that when, when we'd have a full Commission. Tanya, uh, Planning Director, would you like to, to give us, do you have anything to add to that? If not, that's fine. Uh, let's, let's handle it, um, I guess we don't really have a motion on the table, but, uh, there's people here on both sides of it. So instead of, uh, just having a free-for-all, if we could have some, some people that would like to discuss, uh, the, the, uh, positives of vacating the section line first, we'll, we'll take that and then we'll take the, the opponents of vacating.
At this point, procedurally, I think it was originally brought and then continued to today as to whether the Board would reconsider, not what the results of that reconsideration might be. I don't know if that makes a difference to what extent of testimony you choose to have. There's been no decision to reconsider.
More than likely makes a difference on, on what the action will be, but I'm not sure it'll make a difference on the testimony. Uh, so let's handle it that way. The, the, the folks that would be in favor of, of vacating this section line, if they could speak first. I'll ask all pro-opponents of this to, to speak first and then I'll ask the opponents next. Any pro-opponents to vacating this section line?
Um, my name is Shannon Boston. It's baseline surveying. Um, I'm basically here just to speak basically just on a little bit of the history of how we got to this point, not today, but on the fourteenth. So, um, I believe it's back in, I think there's minute meetings, notes back, I think, like July twenty, twenty, that kind of started. And some of you guys were here, some of you weren't. So a lot of this discussion, it kind of started when back at the, we hit a certain point in Meade County when, um, the Board and City Council and everybody pretty much, um, wouldn't allow any more platting of any more lots until we had a second way out of basically the backside of Bloxburg. So, and I think a lot of that through decision-making and then we also, everybody explored at that point, um, that can we use the section line that's previously there? Everybody looked at those options. That one is obviously, um, due to the terrain, um, just isn't really physically possible to actually build it, you agree?
Yes.
So, I mean, and that's where we come up with that. And then we come up with, um, because there was, there was, um, some need for, or some wants from certain landowners in the back to possibly, um, create some more lots back there. So it was through cooperation with landowners, um, such as Ross Lampier and, um, at that time it was Wilson. But, you know, since then Jeremy and Dwight, they own that, that project, the Sunrise Ridge, one that you guys have been seeing. And then Lavenders took part in, um, donating some of the land for that, for Ralph's Way to be built. So, and as far as I know, and I could be corrected wrong, but I believe Jeremy and Dwight funded the cost of that whole entire build and for Ralph's Way to attach to, basically, one, two of things. I mean, it creates a second out for Bloxburg and that's backside of that, but also of course, you know, there's a development behind it to help kind of pay for that too.
Yeah, but why shouldn't they have paid for it?
Well, I agree. I agree. So, yeah.
I mean, let's.
No, and they never asked, yeah, that anybody do pay for it, so.
The developers should pay for it.
Yep. But I think some other time that people questioned, well, they did it only because of development. But when I look at it, it's going to take something to help pay for it. They don't just come out of their own pockets to build a two, three hundred thousand dollar driveway, you know, to get to their property. So if that makes sense. It needs to be a development or something that's going to help pay for it. So it's usually what drives a big improvement like that to happen in Meade County, so.
I would say in the last ten years, prior to that, developers funded their developments.
Right.
Nowadays, they, they look, the government can help fund their developments. I, I.
But anyway, I just wanted to.
And I'm saying that in Sturgis, et cetera.
Yeah. I just wanted to extend a little bit of history for those, like, people that, and it wasn't so much, but I do know there's some notes in meetings that plats were approved contingent upon the section line get figured out. And, and that's been always kind of the agreement is, we build this road, we have the relocation of section line process. We went through that two or three years ago and I, I feel this is a really good fit for it, um, for that process. And that's just, I guess, that's where I.
So that was in agreement with who?
Well, that was just in, I did see it in one minute, meeting minutes, but basically it's been more of a verbal conversation through all these meetings we've had.
I mean, there was agreement by some parties that the Commission was going to vacate the section line?
No.
No, they're not writing. It was just, it was just talk among Commission meetings and planning meetings and things like that.
Yeah, I didn't recall that, that coming to the Commission before.
Yeah. Like I said, I do know there's some minute meetings out there that do say plats were approved based on, you know, that whether we're going to work towards vacating the section line or work towards relocating. So it's kind of the reason for it, but.
Well, you know, one Commission cannot force another Commission to do something.
I agree. That's why I'm just trying to give you some history here, so.
Mr. Lampier, you have anything to add?
Well, I'm Ross Lampier. Um, and I second everything Shannon mentioned. I, for the life of me, am kind of befuddled as to why they would rescind this. There are two landowners involved in this, myself and Jeremy Anderson and his partners. The terrain, as he mentioned, was almost impo, well, you, you can build a road, I guess, about any place, but it was exceedingly rugged, rough terrain, and it really didn't lead anyplace. By simply moving or relocating that section line a quarter mile to the north, it made the road feasible, uh, much less costly and tied into existing roadways that are in Bloxburg. And it was, I believe, this Commission who didn't allow any building permits in Bloxburg until they had a second access point. Their options were exceedingly limited as to where they could go. And so this provides that safety access in case of a catastrophic disaster like a fire. They, they do have a way of getting out of Bloxburg. The, as Shannon mentioned, uh, Jeremy and his partner paid for the entire thing. My involvement was simply to, uh, agree to relocating the section line, which on here would be the red line across there.
So that was your desire to relocate and not to vacate?
Correct. And to Ralph's Way. Well, of course, you can't relocate it until that road was built. And so once that road was finalized, uh, that's when the relocation request came to you. So, uh, we're the only affected landowners for that relocation. I think most of the other people here simply live along Fort Meade Way or in the vicinity. So I, it's just a win-win situation. I mean, it, uh, allows for continued development within Bloxburg. It offers them the safety of a, a new access out of that area in case of a catastrophic event. And it's a nice, safe road. I don't know if any of you have been over there, but, uh, it's built to all the specs that were required. And, uh, I just, uh, don't see any reason to revisit, uh, that particular, uh, relocation.
See, I, I just do not see why the fact that Ralph's Way is built, which I think we all wanted, why that has a thing to do with vacating your section line? Because to me, they, they don't go together. It's two, two entirely separate issues in my mind. And you still have. I, 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 I just don't see it. That's all.
Well, it, it's a section line that leads nowhere. I doubt that.
Well, we got section lines that lead nowhere all across Meade County.
I'm certain we'll have some, I'm certain we'll have some, some other testimony that, that asks.
That's all.
Anything else to add?
It, it, it's nothing personal, Ross. We got landowners all over Meade County that would love to have section lines vacated because they all, they all have reasons for it. Ralph's Way, that's great. And I think it's great the developers did it. The developers should have done it. They developed that land and they should have built the road.
It wasn't going to happen. I was not going to donate that piece of land without the vacation of that. And so then Bloxburg is sitting there with the same dilemma. It does assist a lot of additional people other than myself.
But you see, that was, that was the deal you made with the developer. You didn't make that deal with us.
Well, I'm going to, can I break in a bit?
Yeah.
Because I, I think there needs to be some, this has been talked about a long time. Um, Bloxburg was a dangerous place because of what previous Commissions had allowed for the development. Ralph had been pushing to do further subdivision on the backside of, um, Bloxburg. And now I'm going to make a clarification. I don't think the Commission ever stopped building permits, but they stopped further platting.
Okay.
That's great.
Okay.
And that's allowed under the ordinance because of the one-way-in, one-way-out issue. And there are people who had land up there, wanted to do something. Those people were told there has to be a, you have to build the second way in and out to Fort Meade Way. There were discussions, and I can't say that, you know, I remember them all, but I remember there were multiple discussions where Mr. Lampier stated, well, you know, I don't really necessarily want to give up because that impacts his pasture and everything. But, you know, if we get rid of the section line, that could maybe be some additional incentive for me to work with these guys. Those conversations were held. Um, I know it planning a couple of times and I, and I think made it to the Commission once or twice. There's never a guarantee given. I acknowledge that because, you know, basically said you couldn't do the guarantee. And, um, um, and so that's kind of as I remember the history and walking through it. And, you know, I think, look, the other section lines, and I'm as, as, as big a protector of section lines as probably anybody. But there's also practicalities where, where our terrain does not necessarily allow every section line to be reasonably built and there's better places to put it. Actually, our own Road Superintendent, there are better places to put roads. I mean, look, when the county built Fort Meade Way, they didn't stay on the section line. They put it where it would be better sense to build it. So that happens sometimes. And I, I would hate to send a message. I, I am, I'm staunch believer the developers need to build the improvements. Shannon, I push it pretty hard at planning, uh, much to spend that to the point where developers are complaining about what planning is doing because we're not doing. because we're not doing what we did five years ago. We're putting the owners back on developers. Um, these guys built it, but you can encourage people to do the right thing. And, and generally, I'm going to support relocating section lines to a better place where we're going to get a better road that's going to be easier maintained in the future and is going to provide protection to hundreds of houses. Um, and so, there's a history there, and those types of things were being talked about. So, this did not occur in a vacuum, like, and Ross is correct. No guarantees were ever made. Encouragements, though, did exist.
Okay. We have several people here today that like, would like to talk about this issue. So, let's, let's try to keep the commission comments and questions and, uh, down and ask at the end, if you could write your question down, commissioners, I'd appreciate that. I think it'll flow a little better. Any other proponents to, to vacating this section line? Any other proponents? Seeing any proponents here today? Any opponents that'd like to speak to, uh, this vacation? Any opponents want to speak to this? Hi, Mike.
Mike Charonholm. Um, I'm on your planning board, um, for Meade County here. I guess, uh, there was questions asked about our vote that we had, um, in planning about vacating and relocating the section line. It was a five-to-one vote, um, to deny, um, the vacation of the section line. The purpose in planning was the fact that we don't want to set a precedence of relocating out of convenience of one. We did not feel that relocating this section line of, uh, provided any purpose that would benefit the county besides putting another road on our books. What we feel is the fact that, um, you know, with Ralph's Way here, um, it already provides an access to Bloxburg, and that is on the developer, and that's not on any of, any of the county books. And why should the county, out of convenience, have to take over that road and maintain it? We talk about people's matter of opinion, that the section line is unbuildable. Um, I think we all know the company I, I work for, but we build a lot tougher roads than that one, for sure, in many, many different avenues. Today, it might be unbuildable, but tomorrow it doesn't. It, it, it definitely could be built. Um, and I, I guess, uh, what we, we voted, um, to deny is the fact that we, we don't feel that it serves any viable, um, or, or, um, hardship to any of the, uh, any of the developers out there right now. Um, so, what would be the purpose of relocating and why not just leave it where it lies? Um, it serves a second access. Uh, it also then maintains right-of-way for the county in the future for accessing lands that we see in planning that we, we do feel do, does get landlocked at times, and we don't want to create more headaches down the road. So, that's some of the purpose. I did talk to San Monahan, talked to Shawna. Um, they're the ones that actually called me on this issue, and, uh, they gave me their, their input of why they voted because you guys asked, why did we vote five-to-one to deny?
Thank you, Mr. Charonholm. Uh, anybody else like to speak, uh, opponents would like to speak to this? I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Charonholm, do you have anything else? Any other opponents to this? Does anybody on the commission have any more comments, questions for anybody in the audience?
Um, yeah, I have some comments. Um, you know, we've kind of been throwing around two terms here today, but the previous vote we took, and I think, I think it was unanimous vote that we vacate the section line, not relocate. So, what's, what we're talking about today is not a relocation, is to whether we want to revisit, uh, reverse our decision on vacating the section line. And, um, after getting more information from that May fourteenth meeting or whenever it was, you know, I, I feel like I made the wrong vote. I didn't, I didn't realize that the planning board had voted five-to-one to deny that petition to vacate. So, that holds, you know, huge, that holds huge, uh, value to me. I don't like to vote against what the planning board does. Generally, you know, I, I don't, and I wasn't aware of that. Um, also, you know, I guess, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking about the long-term consequences because, uh, you know, I appreciate the fact that we have the secondary road Ralph's Way. Uh, you know, Ralph, neighbor, friend of mine, uh, so I'm friends of the family. I appreciate that that road is in there, but I, I don't think the section line really, from the standpoint of a commission, I don't see why vacating that section line is necessary. And I don't know what's going to happen ten, thirty, fifty years down the road, but it's possible that we would like to have that section line in place for future. So, um, I guess I'll hold off on a motion right now, but, uh, you know, I, I just don't see the need to vacate, uh, vacate that section line because I think it is going to set a preference, uh, precedence, and I think a lot of ranchers would probably be coming in expecting us to vacate their section line that they deem not buildable, so...
You know, I have to agree. I, I agree with Ted, and frankly, it wasn't until I started hearing from planning commission members that I realized, uh, that I had based my vote also on, um, not full information. And today, we've heard relocation of a section line. We have not heard... When we relocate a section line, we do it in unison. At the same time, we vacate one. We don't do one years down the way. And having done a little development myself, Ralph's Way would not have been developed if it had not been advantageous to the developer. And the developer should pay for the road because they're the ones getting a return. Granted, it is helping the others up in Bloxburg, but it's really hard to determine where one road helps someone and it doesn't help the people that follow afterwards. No road, any road built in front of your house is going to be traveled by more than the owners of the adjacent property or the people in front of it. That's, that's all.
I guess my question is, um, the Ralph's Way right-of-way is, carries the same requirements and, um, abilities as a section line right-of-way. We can put utilities in it, all of those things. Um, just recently, we did this exact same thing for the gun range, where we pushed a section line over. Um, it was considered a relocation, but, uh, the same, same thing on that one, so...
But we did it at the same time. We didn't do it years later.
My question is, uh, section line versus right-of-way, uh, the same, same things are in it, right? There's no, no additional rules that go along with the section line. Um, so, if we would have relocated the section line to Ralph's Way, to Ridge Road, is it Ridge Road? Um, that would be the, that would be the other option, right? You could technically relocate it. Uh, and I, I agree, nothing's not buildable. Um, the reason that it was pushed in that way was for that. Um, developers will pay for those things, and I think that's, that's legitimate. Um, I, I'm con- so, I'm just confused of the... I understand this because it's a planning, planning vote to say no versus commission to say yes, but technically, the right-of-way is the same. Uh, it's a quarter mile different. I don't know what the issue, the underlying issue is, but it seems like there might be additional information that I'm missing.
I guess my question is, what is the purpose of relocating and easement access that you already have in place? Um, we already have public right-of-way and Ralph's Way. So, why would you lose the section line requirements or the section line that you already own?
Well, and, and that's, that's my question. I mean, this has already been through. It's already been passed. So, to reopen it, um, and I'm not saying I'm not opposed to reopening, but I, I don't know the need to reopen is my, what I don't understand is, there's a lot of opposition to the fact to get that closed, but I don't know why there's that opposition.
Well, I think with new information, with the board now knowing that, um, previously, that the voting of planning was not on the me, or on the agenda. Usually, we see how we vote that is on your agenda. For some reason, that one wasn't. Um, and so, I think with that being said, um, I think our matter of our opinion and how we vote it should be recognized.
I want to, I want to address a couple of these procedures. First, as to reason this was a vacation versus relocation, is we told these guys, the developers, that we did not want to do a relocation. We wanted them to build the road first, and they dedicated it first, and then, and rather than do it as one, made sure that you got the full dedication first before we even entertained vacating. And that was a signal given to them, um, and told to them, frankly, by, I think, a couple of commissioners. Um, number two, I, I take exception again to the implication two of the commissioners have made that somehow that they did not have the information that the planning had voted against this because I said it more than once, because I noticed that it hadn't got posted, and I didn't say it was five-to-one because I thought that it was four-to-two, but I said they had gotten voted against at planning, and I said that twice during that conversation. And to imply that this is the first time or that you didn't know it at the time is just factually incorrect. And I appreciate it, and I, in fact, talked to planning after the meeting and said that vote should always be on when it gets to the commission. Um, you know, it was oversight missed by somebody who was updating the stuff at planning. Um, and so, that information was out there.
Okay, I, I want to respond to that, and I'm not going to deny that what Talbot said, but I don't recall Talbot's comments, and definitely, the information, as everyone agrees, was not on the board docs. So, you know, I, I don't know what the record are on the minutes of the comments that were made, but I don't recall the comments. I'm not going to say that he didn't make the comments. But, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not lying about what I'm saying today. And another point I want to make, Rich mentioned on the shooting range where we relocated. There's no way, there was no way that we could have allowed the section line through the shooting range. If they were going to build it, you can have a section line.
But that's the, that's...
But that's why I voted to relocate there.
So, and that's, that's not, I mean, aside from whether they're building or whether somebody's doing a development, I look at it the same way. I don't, I'm not going to say the state got it passed because they didn't. And that's why this one, this one makes more sense to push the section line a quarter mile to the north for the, for the benefit of the rest of those people coming out of Bloxburg. If there's a fire, or if there's a wreck, or, uh, any, any of the hundred things that can happen, and that's why we put that in the ordinance.
Mr. Leggett, or were you finished with your statement? You, you kind of interrupted. Were you finished with your statement, Ted?
Well, I, you know, I, I guess I just haven't been convinced why we need to vacate this section line or relocate. We already got the road. Section line's there. It could be used in the future, so I don't see any benefit to vacate.
Mr. Leggett, did you, I'm going to keep going with that. Mr. Creed?
All the way up and down the I ninety corridor, we're going to have incidences and situations like this in the future. A quarter mile is quite a distance in land that is getting divided. And I can see people coming in habitually, asking and referencing back to this day and to this road, and it doesn't hurt a thing to leave that section line where it's at. We make all kinds of decisions based on what's going to happen twenty years, thirty years down the road, and this is just one more incident, instance, and we're going to have it all the way up and down the corridor.
Sir, did you have something to add? I, yeah.
Yeah, Jeremy Anderson, um, just wanted to second a few things that were said here. Um, developer...
And I assume you're talking opponent or proponent. I did, we were on the proponent here, but...
Yeah, opponent, yeah.
You're a opponent for it, okay.
Yeah. So, um, just wanted to just touch on a few things. So, Jeremy Anderson, um, owner of Sunrise Ridge Subdivision, uh, yes, we did build Ralph's Way, and, um, it was under the understanding through the, the meetings that we had, and Talbot was correct, it was verbally spoken in those meetings that we had to complete Ralph's Way, get it, uh, approved from the county, um, before we could even start the process of relocating that section line. And so, that was the understanding that we went through the whole time, that, um, it was an agreement that, that Ralph, or, uh, Ross and I had made, and, and with Keith Lavender, we needed a little bit of their property to finish Ralph's Way because it, it borders ours for about seventy percent of it, eighty percent. Then there was a few sections where we needed some extra land to get it out to Ralph's Way. And so, the agreement all along was, is that if we could do this, that they would, um, give us the property to be able to complete that. So, that was the understanding through this whole thing, that once the Ralph's Way was completed and it was up to the county standards and it was approved, that, um, that that section line would be relocated over to the new section line. So, we've had meetings going on two years, if not three, um, since this has been started, and there has never been in any meeting that I've been in, um, that has said otherwise than that. So, I, I just wanted to make you guys aware of at least what I was involved in.
Could I make comment to that? Because I was at those meetings.
Certainly, Mike.
And, uh...
And then I'm going to close public testimony here unless somebody else would like to speak.
We did, we did hear this in, in, in tense form about two years ago. I think Shawna was the one who stated that, uh, we are not here to guarantee you anything of how it goes through. I made that statement, said that is between you and Ross, and nothing that the planning can make those determinations, nor can the commission guarantee anything. That's when you were talking about putting in the plotting for that development. Very, very clear that there was no agreement between us, would have to be done between you and Ross.
Um, the connection to North Ridge Trail up there, right, where it meets, uh, Ralph's Way and North Ridge Trail, for the subdivision purposes, we don't need that connection between North Ridge Trail and Ralph's Way. We absolutely don't need it. Um, that was done to be cooperative in the process to give Bloxburg a second access out of there. Um, it's all, it's only going to add more traffic onto the roads that we have to maintain. Sunrise Ridge has to maintain. Um, it doesn't do us any good for our subdivision. That road is going to be built. It did not need to be connected. That was done one hundred percent as a cooperation effort to Bloxburg.
Anybody else like to speak to this? Uh, yes, sir.
Bob Sundin, I live on Fort Meade Way. Um, when you move a section line for a public facility like the shooting range, many people benefit. How many big people benefit from this section line move or relocate? Um, how many people, citizens of Meade County will, um, benefit from this? And the other thing is, and it's all been said, but the precedent, the precedent being sent here to the rest of the landowners that might want to move a section line or vacate one.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak to this subject? Anybody else want to speak to this? Shannon, real brief, uh, you already got to speak, so keep it real brief.
Well, I just want to, um, bring everybody's attention. When you, there's very few section line roads that can be built. When you, there's very few section line roads that can be built train wise to stay in within the 66 foot. So keep in mind when you're talking, the other one might get built 30, 40, 50 years from now. Ralph's Way has two major drainage easements in it which needed really big construction easements granted by the adjoining landowners. So when you have opposition from landowners where a section line needs to go and you don't have their cooperation, you're not going to get that. You're talking building in a big giant ravine. They don't have to give up those construction easements just because you, somebody wants to push a section line road through their property. Just something to keep in mind. When we see that one's unbuildable, technically, I mean, if you don't have landowner cooperation, it truly is unbuildable. So, but-
Well, the only thing I'll say is you always have to have landowner cooperation anytime you build a road.
Anybody else want to speak to this? Mr. Charnholm, I love, Mr. Vasquez speak twice. You, you care to jump up? I just want to be fair on this testimony because it's sensitive issue with everybody. Anybody else want to speak to this matter? If not, I'm going to close public testimony unless the commissioner asks a direct question to you. Any questions, comments from the commission?
I'd make a comment to that, one of the last speakers. I think thousands of people in Mead County benefit from Ralph's Way being constructed. You have hundreds of homes up there that had one way in and out. It was tight. And if we get a fire coming through there, thousands of people protected that second way. So again, I, I think you can, you can, you know, you can build the road anywhere you want. If you want to spend a million dollars worth.
What?
Sure, but everybody wants to put the road where it makes most sense long-term and it, infrastructure costs less. I just, I think this was a win all the way around for the people of the county to get that road in there and it solved the problem and something I was terrified of and that would be a fire running down that ridge. Still scared of that happening, but now at least if there's a car accident going out on I-90 and it's bottlenecked, you know, the people on top can be moving both ways depending on where the fire is coming from. So. I think this was a practical solution. I think it all made sense.
So.
Mr. Commissioner?
I, I mean, I, I agree with everything Talbot just said, but I fail to realize why we need to vacate the section line. So, you know, I understand, I, I agree with what Talbot said, but why do we need to vacate the section line?
I agree with what Talbot said too. And I also remember we were not allowing building until there was a, an access out of there. But again, I see how that has nothing to do with a section line a quarter mile away, which is a good, what, in city terms, three to four blocks away. Someday, there could be another and the main thing is it, it sets a precedent. And that was an agreement between developers. That was not a signed agreement amongst commissioners.
Any other questions, comments from the commission and/or action?
Once again, I, I just want to go back to the planning, the planning board who were involved in all these conversations, everything. I wasn't, but if the planning had, had voted unanimously to, to vacate that section line, I would probably stay with, with their decision. Once again, I would, I'm going to say I think I made the wrong vote. So I'm going to make a motion that we reverse the decision on vacating the section line.
Okay, just to clarify, I don't know that we can reverse the decision on vacation.
Uh, I don't know, yeah, I don't know what-
We'd have to move to reconsider. Is that correct, Ken?
Yeah, I don't know what the motion is.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get it straight.
But I did talk to Lana yesterday. She said that, you know, the plat was, been filed, but it, it's not a problem to reverse what we did.
That's, that's correct. We can file a document and all, all work on drafting it that's success, acceptable to reverse the decision if that's what the board wants.
But we can-
In my mind, this is, the motion would be to reconsider the vacation and then set a hearing date. You've got the public notice, you've got people here. Rhea, I don't, my sheet doesn't say if this is an action item or how it's specifically listed on the agenda.
It's listed.
It's listed as an action?
So the-
I, I think you could do a motion to reconsider and then a motion to do whatever on reconsideration.
Okay.
And do a vote, but I would like two, two separate motions. So one, to reconsider the decision made regarding vacating the section line. If that passes, then you could do a vote for vacating or not. Basically redoing your vote from back in May.
I'll just start then with a motion to reconsider and we'll see where it goes if there's a second.
Motion to reconsider our decision made on May 14th. Would that be appropriate, Ken? Of vacating this section line?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion to that motion? I'm gonna, I'm gonna just, I haven't, I've remained quiet, listened to testimony. This is, this is a tough one when we get into section line debates. There, there's no doubt. I will have to justify my vote in a bit and that's fine. I can do that. I'm, I've got big shoulders. My concern is reversing a decision. I, I will admit that I think we've even had some discussion toward that with our legal team, that there could be a concern with that. That's one concern. The other concern is I have looked up the history. I don't, wasn't involved in the conversation, Mr. Charnholm, like, like you were. But nonetheless, this goes back about two, three years, a lot of, lot of this. And, and a lot of the discussion, it was clear that the planning, in their discussions, no action. I will, I will say there's no action, but it was clear there was always, the talk was always the vacation and Ralph's Way. I, I can't argue the vacation does nothing for the county right now. I can't argue that. But I will argue, as Talbot mentioned, that Ralph's Way was a huge benefit for the county. And I think that there's always give and take to relocation. I don't know why the commission didn't handle it then, but nonetheless, they did not. So with that said, I just wanted to make those comments to be clear when the vote comes out, what my thinking was. Motion and second on the floor. Is there any other discussion to that motion? Hearing none, I'll call for an electronic vote. And we cannot take electronic vote. I'll take a roll call vote on, on this, on this particular one. Commissioner Wazurik?
I vote against the motion.
Mr. Seaman?
Yea.
Mr. Leggett?
Nay.
Mr. Creed?
Uh, yes.
And the chair votes no. So the motion fails.
Okay, so there won't be any need for another motion?
No. Moving on down to the, thank you all for coming today. Moving on down to the consent calendar with item J-7 removed. Consent calendar handling items J-1 through 6.
Motion to approve items J-1 through 6. I'll second.
Motion is second on the floor to approve consent items J-1 through 6. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Item J-7, I'm going to, I'll form any discussion or action.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wazurik, would the secretary please take note that Commissioner Wazurik is removing himself from any discussion or action on, on item J-7? Which is a, we need a motion to set a hearing date to, to vacate a public access easement for July 23rd, 2024 at 10 a.m.
I'll make a motion to set the hearing date to vacate a public easement for July 23rd at 10 o'clock.
Second.
Have a motion is second on the floor to set the public hearing date for the access easement for July 23rd, 2024 at 10 a.m. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Just would you, please note that there was just the four of us that voted on that. Brings us down to executive session. Is there, need to go into executive session?
Yeah.
I know there is.
Move to go into executive session for legal and personnel.
Have a motion to go into executive session. For legal and personnel, I need a second.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor to go into executive session for legal and personnel. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Oppose, same sign.
I feel hair back there.
No, but you're still young.
I'll be forty nine.
Oh, well Talbot's got a new copy.
He he's working on it right now. He'll send it. There was a little bit of wording change.
Yeah, I wonder how long East River, oh my golly, that's gonna be a billion.
I saw it on Canton in the high school, they had a high school parking lot where they were just putting trash. My wife and my sister-in-law came back from, they went to Minnesota to a concert. New Kids on the Block, six time. Yeah, they're still around. They're killing it too. They're making a lot of money on tours. But they've been there six, they've been to six of their concerts in five years. That's it, no more. Her sister bought her this, they were stage, on the stage, like, you know.
Brought your wife on stage?
Oh yeah, and her sister, my sister-in-law. Isn't there a cruise ship that does that, like the cruise ship and it's like a New Kids on the Block or something like that? Maybe, I don't know. I told her, I said, well, you know, don't come back pregnant, but she's not, no I'm kidding. But uh, yeah, it's, they had a lot of fun. But anyway, coming back though, they uh, had a lot of problems with the roads and then Carmen from the Deeds, she came back from uh, where she was in South Dakota, some family thing they did this week. Yeah, and she said that there was, they, there was, roads were impassable and the river, I s- I guess like, it was just... We came back Friday from Sioux Falls and it was, we had to wait for the interstate to come back, but yeah, there was... We can't get no rain here. I don't want to flood, but I mean, I got hail last night. I live in Somerset and it was bad for a minute. I was, I was holding this phone. Yeah, they were in the garage, yeah. I didn't inspect it that close, to be honest with you, and uh, I'm probably gonna do that this weekend and look at what, but I have like, it's a newer home so the roof is uh, special. But it doesn't, yeah. I'm sure, but they say, don't do a claim in the beginning of the season, wait.
That's right, at the end of the year.
When I was sitting there like this watching it with the phone, I was like, somebody's gonna call me because it was, well, it was like marbles and then uh, a couple random uh, good grape size, oop, uh Somerset, Elk, uh exit forty six, Elk Creek, uh, um Glenwood, Sun Valley. Oh, yeah, so uh, the other side of Somerset got uh... Are you serious? No way, oh man.
You need to join, even though these guys don't do Facebook, there is a Somerset Facebook page. Which I'm a member of.
Quite entertaining, I've heard.
And they had lots of pictures.
Yeah, she's all over it on...
Lots of baseball sized hail things. Did Talbot get much hail? Did you get any hail?
I, I watched it go both sides of my place, I could see it.
So, did your car, your new car get it? So, he got damaged?
I didn't lose any flowers, so that's, that was my indicator. I was like, eh, if there was leaves all over then... Speaking of real quick Facebook, um, so I saw when the election and you were kinda mad about um, the election results, like if people turn on...
Motion to come, motion to come out of exec, sorry Talbot.
All right, well, I'll turn on my mic too.
Motion second, come out of exec, uh all those, any discussion of that motion, all those in favor say aye.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not designated a point of contact, because it's not, it's what they're doing, yeah, that's not the right one, that's not the one you just edited. Go roll up. Thought you, remember you were for, you were making those edits?
I don't know. There's an email on the bottom there.
Well, you know.
Uh, we're now back on, if anyone's following along at home, we're on uh, H, back to H one on the agenda. Resolution for the Wildland Fire.
Same thing to me too. How am I after manager right there? Oh, I like that. Max on behalf. Yeah, 'cause what you're only doing is you're just taking, you're stepping in their shoes. So you don't have to reiterate, 'cause he don't meet county manager.
What I was struggling with, I didn't want to repeat myself, but I was like, I'm trying to, you know, that's, that's much better.
Yeah, so we've got the resolu-, we've got your proposed resolution on the agenda, correct?
Yes.
Now, the only other thing, do we wanna put the e- um, emergency clause on that?
Yeah, I hear you.
Don't have a fire.
I don't, I don't know what that is, but I can guess.
It would allow it to go into effect, um, versus, versus the twenty one days.
Oh, I didn't know that was a thing. Definitely needed today.
Okay, does everybody see, see what is written on the screen? Uh, do I have any action toward that?
Make a motion to approve the resolution. Reception for strike everything after. Now therefore han and replace it with. Now therefore be it resolved. Pointed at the fire coordinator. Hereby authorized to act on behalf of the county. Fire agreement, except that decision resulting in the expenditure funds exceeding five thousand dollars also require the approval of at least two commissioners. Period, absence of the need county manager. Chairman of the board of the county commission, comma, sheriff, comma, county deputy, comma, or the chairperson of the meat county firefighters association act on behalf of the emergency manager. Period, further to declare emergency. Ria has that, what you...
He has it except for the emergency part, which I kinda just tagged on. Okay, and that's fine as long...
I am talking in...
That's why I asked if Ria had that.
You guys are all such liars.
Um, we have a motion on the floor, I need a second. Motion second on the floor to uh, pass this resolution, been posted, uh with the now therefore be it resolved change to what Talbot just read. Uh, any discussion to this motion? Saying none, all those in favor say aye. Oh, same sign.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Like we have completed our agenda and there's no further business, so I declare us adjourned. So it goes into effect, as soon as I sign it.